All right, this is our community's house. We are all guests in it here to serve our community. My name is Mike Little, Mayor of the District of North Vancouver, and the pleasure falls to me to welcome you all here to this special meeting of council for Monday, April 14th at six o'clock. We like to start off our meeting in a good way, so I've asked councillor Pope to read our land acknowledgement.
Thank you very much. We respectfully acknowledge the original peoples of these lands and waters, specifically the Salewata, Squamish, and Musqueam, on whose unceded ancestral lands the District of North Vancouver is located. We value, excuse me, we value the opportunity to learn, share, and serve our community on these unceded lands.
Thank you very much, councillor Pope. Councillor, we have an agenda that's been circulated. Any errors or omissions from the agenda is presented. There are none. Will someone please move its adoption? Move by councillor Back, second by councillor Hanson. I'll call the question. All in favour? Contrary minded, motion is carried. Oh, councillor, we, we do have a set of meeting minutes that have circulated with the package from the April 1st meeting, or the public hearing leading up to this item, public meeting. Will somebody please, are there any errors or omissions from those meeting minutes presented? There are none. Will someone move their adoption? Move by councillor Back, second by councillor Ma. That was from a different dated meeting, and we'll bring that back to a regular meeting of council for consideration. But thank you for reminding us, councillor Ma. I'll take it as your seconding on the, on the minutes. Thank you very much. Prepare to call the question. All in favour? Contrary minded, motion is carried and the meeting minutes are adopted. Just before we get into the regular business, I was just going to say, we have called this the special meeting of council. So the only thing that makes it special in our system is that it wasn't originally on the calendar of planned meeting nights when we set up the calendar back in December of last year. And we added this night for one particular reason. The election falls on one of our regular meetings of council, and we looked at the evening and thought, well, we didn't want to have a council meeting, potentially make it harder for people to get out and vote on election day. So we broke up the meeting. We took this one because it's this, a particular item, because it's time sensitive and moved it forward. And some of the other items that were not time sensitive, we've actually moved back to another space that fits out. And that created this special meeting of council tonight for tonight's consideration of this particular issue. I, before I get into the item, I did just want to say that when we have a special meeting of council, it is optional for us to create public input period. And if a special meeting of council is replacing a regular meeting of council, I'll usually have all the normal trappings of a regular meeting of council. But because this is for one specific purpose, we've decided not to put a public input period at the front of the meeting. And you'll see that the item that we have to consider tonight, because it is a return from a public hearing and first opportunity for council to have their input, and it wouldn't be appropriate for the public to be commenting on the matter after the close of the public hearing, we decided not to have a public input period at the front of the meeting. So the purpose we've gathered for tonight is to return the item from a public hearing and hear the first arguments and comments from council on whether they would like this particular item to go forward. So I'll put it on the floor for our discussion first, and we do have some comments from staff to reintroduce us to the item. But this is item 3.1 on our agenda, bylaws 8665, 8666, 8733, and 8734, all governing short-term rentals in our community. And I do look to staff for initial comments, Miss Atva, and then I'll have some further comments before we get into our council discussion on the matter. Miss Atva?
Great, thank you very much, Your Worship, Mayor Little. Good evening, members of council. We're happy to be here today to continue this work on short-term rentals. Just a few comments, if I may, regarding the bylaws that are proposed for amendment and process. As we know, the zoning, there are enough four bylaws attached. The zoning bylaw amendment is included in the agenda package, its attachment four. That zoning bylaw amendment related to short-term rentals includes information that describes what a short-term rental is. For example, states that it would be for a period not to exceed 28 consecutive days. Also, an attachment four in the bylaw describes elements such as a maximum of six patrons at one time. So these are elements, provisions, related to the use, related to the short-term rental use. And for this reason, changes, any desired changes that council may wish to see regarding these elements are substantive in nature and would require amendments to the bylaws or new bylaws. And that also in turn would in fact impact the public hearing that was held two weeks ago. A new public hearing would be required. We also want to say that we have been timing this work also to align as well as we can with the province's requirements. And there may first deadline to sign up for the registry, and that requires a business licence from a local government. In this case, we know that for the district, it could be confirmation that a business licence application has been made. Staff have been readying to do this tomorrow, subject to council's decisions regarding second and third reading. Just as an alternate to that process, if council were to adopt the recommended bylaws today, for example, or a second and third reading rather, council could then also consider other motions directing staff to bring back any changes council sees fit. So thank you, Your Worship. Just wanted to provide some of that information as context.
Thank you very much, Miss Atva. Just before we get into the debate of council, I was going to say that there was a very important question that came up in the course of our debate, which was, what could the council vary as we move from the public hearing to second and third? If we weren't satisfied with the wording that was before us today, what could be varied? And staff looked into the matter, and we just want to be clear that because the items that were raised by council at the time are embedded in the definition of the use, they're not eligible to be changed at second and third, we would have to roll back and do the change and create, and do a new public hearing. Or we have the alternative option to pass it as is, and then signal that we intend to make a future change or review the matter. And so we don't have the ability on the fly today to change that as it would change user density, which we're not allowed to do without a public hearing. And so I just wanted to put that out there before we have our debate. I'll be moving the staff recommendation for discussion today, and I do intend to have a follow-up motion after this has been considered. One that will start a process for the staff to be monitoring, reviewing, and then reporting back to us, particularly on that issue of the 28 days at the time. But thank you, councillor Murray. I note you seconded the matter. Just for the discussion on it, I think it's important for us to modernize our housing stock, but at the same time, keep in balance that we want to be able to produce reliable long-term rentals in our community. And so we have to make sure that the short-term rentals are for that specific purpose and not as a workaround for long-term rentals. I'll say, you know, throughout the debate, it became clear to me that this really is a social contract between the council and the landlords. One where if you follow the regulations properly and you treat your tenants properly, then we will be there to say that this was a short-term rental. And, and so if a tenant is misbehaving, if a tenant is, has decided to not follow the regulations, then we will be saying, reinforcing that this was in fact legitimate short-term rental. But if landlords are not following the regulations, are not actually fulfilling their obligation as a manager of a short-term rental space, then the District of North Vancouver is going to respond. We may challenge a business licence, we may take further actions, but specifically if the province comes to us and says, we don't think this was actually operating as a short-term rental. It was actually a long-term rental in disguise, then we'll be there to, to advocate to, on what happened in that case. And I think it's important for us to have that agreement back and forth between us as the regulator and the landlords, as those being responsible for short-term rentals, to make sure that wherever reasonably practicable, long-term rentals are still protected in our community and the Residential Tenancy Act is respected when, when spaces are actually being used for a long-term rental purpose. Having said that, initially, when we started out on this debate a long time ago, when we did the pop-ups, and I think 2022 or something like that, I was pretty restricted in my view about it. I thought we should keep the Airbnbs to a very, very limited scope. As the debate went on, and I heard more and more from the community about how it was being used, I relaxed a little bit on, on how we can use the space and that it's not just always about vacations. Sometimes it's about repairs, sometimes it's about temporary workers coming in and, and fulfilling contracts. And so it needs to be a little more flexible than just simply focused on the vacation rental market, which gets so much of the press around Airbnb's. So I'm glad that staff have come forward with this, I think, reasonable interpretation of the provincial regulations with the one change that we identified. And I'll be supportive of the staff recommendation at this time. Councillor Murray, your comments, please.
Thank you, Mayor Little. I'm getting echo-ese. I'm getting an echo.
That's probably me. I'll fix that.
Okay, thank you. So yeah, I think the legislation that the province has put in place is going to address the issue around property owner responsibility. No longer are homes or apartments going to be purchased for investment and ultimately turned into Airbnb's or hotel rooms. I think that, you know, we could have pivoted many, many years ago when we didn't have any restrictions on rentals, certainly in towers. You know, a lot of those rentals were turned into Airbnb's, and I think that's what, you know, around the region that was happening. And I think that's what precipitated these changes to the legislation because ultimately, long-term housing was disappearing. So I think the legislation has ticked off the issues in regards to complaints and the issue of housing. Done. I do agree that we need to extend this from 28 days to 30 days. Certainly, the presentations that came forward during the public hearing were very compelling. You know, the, the, the film industry right now is struggling again as there's other places around the world that are offering larger tax incentives. And the film industry is, is looking at those places and they're moving to those places. And now we have the issues around the tariffs and the economics between our country and the US, and how is that going to affect what's going on, including tourism? You know, we're certainly impacting the US's tourism. And Airbnb is a huge part of tourism for us. We are not building any more hotels. We are replacing a hotel on Capitoline, Capitoline Road, but it's not a, there's not a net gain to hotel rooms in the district. We've actually lost hotel rooms over the years, enclosing many of them that existed in the past. So, you know, as, as a tourism destination, we have, you know, multiple major destinations for people to come and visit. And, you know, we obviously need places for them to stay. I would add as well that, so I'm supportive of the bylaw, but I, I heard you are going to be bringing forward a follow-up motion, Mayor Little, and I'm not interested in, in reviewing the 28 days. I'm interested in actually extending and reconsidering the, the 28-day perspective. I think it should go to 90 days. And we should be aligned with the city of North Vancouver. We've done that on many bylaws over the years, not wanting to impact one another negatively. So we've lined up our bylaws, and I'm, I'm sorry that that, you know, didn't come forward when we were initially looking at this. They passed this bylaw, I think, last June. They completed theirs. It's been frustrating, the length of time this has taken. Certainly, the province hasn't helped, in my opinion, by bringing forward the information that staff needed in January to get this thing going. We're right at the, like, we're at midnight right now in, in the, the passing of this. But I do want to review both the process that's attached to the short-term rentals and the process that was attached to coach houses. Because I don't think I've ever experienced two public hearings behaving like public meetings that we've seen with those two issues. When we talked about coach houses, there were a number of presentations that were asking questions about floor space ratio, et cetera. And this one talked about 28 days. There were numerous questions. And I just, I'm just wondering where we could improve so those questions are being asked at public meetings versus public hearings? Because it's frustrating, from my perspective, not being able to answer them. And I know, Mayor Little, you, you know, you're very clear with the audience that we are here to listen, and yet there was so much confusion by so many people and so many unanswered questions. And I really do think the operators had a vested interest in paying attention to all of this, and they were taking part, but I guess what they were trying to seek, they were, they were not successful. So I, I would suggest that we do a review of both of those scenarios and see if we maybe can pivot in the future. They're complex. There's lots of things to consider. But we can always, we can always look and review and do better. So I'll support the motion. But I do want to have staff advise what we need to do to bring forward a future opportunity to discuss amending this bylaw to include 90 days. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Murray. I have councillors Hanson, Back, and Ma. Councillor Hanson, your comments, please.
Thank you very much. I'm pleased to support these bylaw amendments. I thank staff for all the work that has been done on this issue, not just for these bylaw amendments, but over the last couple of years, a great deal of attention. I regret that I was not present at the public hearing that was conducted April 1st. However, I did watch that public hearing on video in full. And I would like to specifically thank my council colleagues for raising the questions that they did. They were many of the same questions that I would have asked had I been present. I also thank all the members of the public who came out, shared their views. I also attended the public hearing that was held in October 2023 regarding the earlier proposed bylaw amendments on short-term rentals, and my understanding of the issues has benefited from those comments as well. I believe that the current proposal strikes a good balance between the goals of regulating short-term rentals and protecting long-term rental stock. Short-term rentals do fill an important role in our tourist industry. Recently, for example, I travelled to New Zealand to visit my son, who has been living there for some years. We had a need for accommodations that allowed us to spend time together as a family. Short-term rentals fill a need that is not always met by hotels or motels. And it is, I believe, important that we support our tourist economy, and I would not favor therefore an outright ban on short-term rentals. This model that's being put forward after much painstaking work of the staff restricts short-term rentals to principal residences and to attached accessory suites. And this protects the vast majority of rental housing for long-term rental, but also ensures some supply of short-term rentals. The proposed bylaws substantially track the provincial legislation with some modifications. We have decided to limit short-term rentals to either the one occupied main residence or an unoccupied secondary suite, and I support this. I believe this will serve to reduce community impacts. I also support the requirement for off-street parking and the occupancy limit of six persons. Again, I believe all of this will serve to limit neighborhood disruption. On the issue of the maximum stay of 28 days versus 89 days as allowed by the provincial legislation, I have frankly been persuaded by the representations from the public that the longer timeframe makes more sense. A time limit of less than 90 days would bring us into alignment with the city of North Vancouver. And I won't repeat the many comments made, but there seem to be a lot of compelling arguments for why it would be better to have a simple demarcation line between short-term and long-term rentals at 90 days, less one day. Based on what we heard at the public hearing, what would make most sense, in my view, would be to have the maximum stay at 89 days and then amend the bed and breakfast bylaws to reflect that timeframe at the same time. However, I understand this will require a public hearing, and its time is of the essence to comply with the provincial licensing requirement. I am happy to support these bylaw amendments, and we can address the maximum stay down the road. But along with other members of council, we've already heard from councillor Murray and councillor Little, I will be advocating that we quickly bring back further amendments to extend the maximum stay of 89 days, even if that does require another public hearing. Final issue that I do believe is worthy of attention is that this will allow us to collect a 3% room tax, which will be redirected towards affordable housing and provide another benefit to our community. So pleased that this has reached this stage, and I do congratulate everyone involved to bring it to this point. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Hanson. Councillor Ma?
Thank you to everyone who provided feedback, both previously and at the most recent public hearing. I will support this motion. I think it's a good compromise for the community. I think not all homeowners will want to engage in short-term rentals. Some will opt to continue renting on a long-term basis, and that will provide some affordable rental housing stock. At the same time, this bylaw will support tourism, as many of my fellow councillors have mentioned. And it will also allow homeowners to make a little income. Just because someone owns a home doesn't necessarily mean that they're rich. I think we need to keep that in mind. A lot of us still have mortgages to pay and, and costs to meet, especially in these current times. My intent tonight was to support the bylaw receiving second and third reading. And then, I think, Mike Little, sorry, Mayor Little, alluded to this. Take a little time to review whether we should increase it. And if we do increase it, I believe we should look at going to 89 days, because the definition of short-term rentals is less than 89 days. I think it's important for people to remember, if you hit 90 days and above, you will be governed by the Residential Tenancy Act. I do have a couple of questions, and it might help people to understand. When, when I was looking at this recommendation by staff...
To be clear, we can't answer questions on things that were subject of the, the public hearing. We can't get new information before we've completed the voting on the matter.
Would my questions be considered new information?
Your worship, it depends on the question. So we're, we're going to have the clerk make a ruling on whether that's new information and related to the particular bylaw. My preference would be that you make your comments and your vote based on what we heard publicly up until this point.
I did have a chance to talk to the deputy clerk before. I'm not sure if she's able to rule on my questions.
Through you, Your Worship, it would depend on if this is a procedural question or not, in which I...
Procedural.
Procedural, fine, but any new information regarding the bylaw could not be received.
I believe this is more procedural, the questions I had. Okay. First question, normally bylaws are enacted and enforced after adoption. But however, operators will be able to apply for a business licence should council give second or third reading tonight. Can we just clarify that?
Okay. That's not new information as far as you're concerned, or...
Yes, Your Worship, councillor Ma, that was information provided at the public hearing. We can confirm that we'll begin receiving applications, and we'll provide confirmation to the applicants that their application has been submitted so they can commit to the registration process with the province by the May 1st deadline.
Okay. I'll just flip at that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. I see no further speakers from council on the matter. Prepare to call the question. All in favour? Contrary minded, motion is carried. As a follow-up motion, I'm trying to wordsmith this a little bit. Oh, sorry, councillor Forbes. Did you, I apologize if I missed you on the virtual call list. Did you have some comments you wanted to make on the matter? Or was that a hand to vote in support?
The hand was to vote in support, and I apologize. I'm having trouble for some reason with the video feed. Every time I go to click on it, it just cancels me right out of the meeting. So I'm sorry that there's no video.
Okay. Well, thank you for your acknowledgement. You are on the record as having participated in the vote. Thank you very much. Okay, so the follow-up motion would be that council direct staff to monitor the implementation of the STR, report back to council in September of 2025, and prepare an amendment to the definition of an STR to extend from 28 days to the provincial maximum. I'm cautious to say 89, or 90, or 90 minus one, but I'll say to the provincial maximum. Does that meet your needs, Mr. Milburn, in terms of?
Yes, yes, Your Worship, that would meet our needs.
Second.
I'll provide that to the clerk. It's been seconded by councillor Murray. And I ran out of paper, so... Yeah, so just one of the, as we went through the debate, it became clear that people use the, the rentals and want to be able to give a little more security in what we'll call a medium-term tenure for some of the rentals. And it does appear to me, what, where I've come around on this issue is, you know, I initially really looked at Airbnb's as being a direct competitor to hotels, which case we need to have a healthy hotel market in our community as well, so that they're there for you when you want to have a special event. And as it, as the debate went on, I saw that more and more and more of them are being used for much longer term than that. And, you know, as I mentioned in the first discussion about construction work, temporary contracts, and they want to be able to give certainty of tenure to, to the people staying in those spaces. And so I think that a longer term than what was proposed is not unreasonable in this case. And so we'll have the discussion at that time, and it will have to have its own input at that time. But I would like to have that debate and would love to hear back about the implementation. Hopefully, we'll have some good data at the time about how many people have taken us up on the STR and, and where we at on some of the initial early compliance issues that we're probably going to face. But I look forward to that, coming back and having a discussion with the public about it at that time. Councillor Murray, do you have additional comments? We're just, we're working to get that put up on the screen, but do you have some initial comments?
Yeah, I was just wondering if you could just read it back to me. I can't see it.
Just copy and pasting and put it on the slide. Yeah, I can read it back from the paper in the interim.
Oh, there we go. Oh, that's the, oh, no, that was the original one.
That council direct staff, council direct staff to monitor the implementation of the short-term rental regulations, report back to council in September of 2025, and prepare an amendment to the definition of a short-term rental to extend from 28 days to the provincial maximum.
So when would, so my question would be, when would that extension to? Because we've got people that, you know, have been operating these for longer than 28 days. And so I'm just wondering, your, your suggestion is not that we bring this back in September, but that we could amend. I mean, there seems to be, you know, broad support around the table to go to the 89 days, 90 days less a day. So when can that amendment be brought forward?
I had intended to give staff a little bit of time to get some data returned on the matter. Keeping in mind that what we have just passed doesn't limit a person from staying up to the 98 days. It just means that they have to enter it into the system as separate 28-day contracts in order to be able to, to do it. And there is this tricky little bit about the interpretation of how you end one period and start the next, which was that, the assumption was that you have to entirely vacate the unit, which seems impractical when somebody's here for a longer work tenure and such. Sorry, councillor Murray?
Well, I was just going to say, Mayor Little, it's not just that they have to vacate, but they have to pay all the, they have to pay fees again. Cleaning fees that are, you know, I mean, I, I don't know if you've ever stayed in an Airbnb before, but when you look at your bill, there's a lot of lines on that bill. And when you move out and have to move back in to accommodate a bylaw, you have to repay all those fees again. And that was what, you know, many people were trying to get across. So, you know, this, this is not, this is nothing new. You know, Airbnb's have been around for a long time, even though we prohibited them. They have been existing in our community for many, many years. You know, there's operators that have exceptional reputations in this community with the properties that they, they put forward. They want to follow the rules. They don't want to break them. This is going to impact them if we don't allow an extension to the 90 days or to the 28 days. You know, and again, we've got, you know, a lot of the pilots that exist in the film industry happen in the summer months. You know, the, the, the speed in which we have to do this, I mean, I've been talking to staff for weeks now about allowing people to submit applications ahead of the bylaw adoption, which is on the 28th, for Airbnbs, because they have bookings. They had bookings last year. There's residents in our community. I know one that has a family coming in the summer for a wedding, and they were panicking about what was going to happen. So I just don't really think we need to take some lengthy time to gather data about things that are, that are working. The issues that were a problem were absentee property owners that were renting out their properties and not managing what was going on with people renting their properties. And then the issue around housing, those two things have been dealt with through this legislation. There is enforcement programs put in place to deal with that. And we have written a bylaw to be able to address that as well. So why we are waiting for data to be collected, I just, I don't understand. I just, I, I, you know, and I would say actually that I would propose a friendly amendment to bring back the amendment on the 28 days as soon as possible.
Yeah, and councillor Murray, I'm totally open to that. I totally hear what you're saying about it. May I suggest, you're the second or on the motion, may I suggest we do one round of council having a discussion? We'll, we'll see what their, their view is on how quickly we want to do it. When we do bring it back, because it is a change to user density of an existing bylaw, we'll have to do a separate public hearing process for it. And so there is a little bit of time and process that needs to take place in order to be able to do it. It can't just be something that's done snap of the finger. But what I propose then councillor Murray is I'm going to go through the speaker's list. If any member of council wants to chime in on, and also ideally provide their comments on how quickly they want to pursue this, I'm totally amenable to changing the date provision on that to something else, recognizing your comments. Do you have any comments, any additional comments as a second or I think you'd still have about two more minutes?
No, just that I think it's imperative that we support people with Airbnbs, given that we are, we, you know, we've just passed the bylaw. And, and supporting them is extending to 90 days less a day. That's supporting them because they have all been operating, many of them have been operating like that for many, many, many years. So let's help them. Let's support them. Let's listen to what they were saying at the public hearing and move forward. They're the experts, not us, and, and I, and I trust that they know what they're talking about. So I would just like to bring it back as soon as possible. I get that there's a process to the public hearing to facilitate, but it certainly can be brought back in the next month or so.
Make your comments. Councillor Back.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Little. I didn't speak to the original motion. I did agree with all of the comments around the table. Certainly at the public hearing, there were a few issues that were brought up, but there was general support for regulation for short-term rentals being brought in. As has been highlighted, obviously, Airbnb and other platforms have been operating in our community for a very long time, as it is. But I did hear the theme, the main theme coming out of that is we do need to look at extending to, to the 90-day booking time limit. I think, you know, it was clear from many of the comments during the hearing, people use short-term rentals in different ways, extended stays with family, maybe they're here to support a family member who's, you know, in hospital or, or maybe they're undergoing renovations in their home, and they need a place to stay for, for certainly longer than 30 days. So I do support that. Also, I think it's very important that we're in sync with the city of North Vancouver. When people go on to a platform like Airbnb and they search North Vancouver, they don't necessarily know the difference between the city or the district, and it does put operators in the district at a disadvantage if we have a different time limit from, from the city, in my opinion. So I actually agree with all of councillor Murray's comments, and I think we should try to make this change as quickly as possible. While it may require another public hearing, I think, I think we can probably take care of that fairly quickly. But I think that's, that's the main issue, that we should try to change as quickly as we can. You know, I think there were other points that were brought up during the public hearing. And so I would appreciate a check-in in September as well, just as a bit of a progress update to see how things are going. But I think in terms of increasing the booking time limit to the provincial maximum, we should be doing that sooner than later. So if we can get that done, say, within the next month, I think we should be doing that.
Thank you, councillor Back. Councillor Hanson.
Yeah, thank you very much, your worship. I also, just as has been stated by the last speakers, would support bringing this forward as quickly as possible. It seemed to make overwhelming sense, from my point of view, that it be 89 days. And given that that's the case, the sooner that we bring the bylaw, from my point of view, into alignment with that, the better, sooner the better, from my point of view.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Pope.
I just want to say that I, I'm in agreement again with making this happen sooner rather than later. And I just wanted to confirm that that would indeed mean that we'd have to have another round of public hearings. And is that going to be possible in the short term?
Any alternative approval process available for this type of a process, Mr. Milburn?
Your worship, I believe it would necessitate an additional public hearing. And hearing the initial date of September and looking at, hearing the message I've heard from some council members about as early as possible, I would suggest a potential amendment to the resolution could be to return it in May. That would be quick, and that would be in a timeframe that staff could prepare the report for council consideration, after which, of course, we would be scheduling a public hearing to occur as soon as the public notice had been completed.
For the last clause.
For, for the amendment, whichever amendment council directs at that time.
The other thing was, we also heard from bed and breakfast owners during the hearing, and they were concerned that if we did go with 60 or 90 days, that it was going to put them at a disadvantage. And so can that part of the bylaw be written so that it, it all aligns?
That's a good question. So bed and breakfast had a separate regulation that was 28 days, which was actually the reason for aligning it as 28 days initially. If we had this discussion, would it affect both short-term rental and bed and breakfast regulation? Or that's something that council has to signal their intent for?
Council intent is always helpful in the end direction. And so I would look to the clerk to see if this, such an amendment would either be part of this, an amendment to the initial motion, or a separate motion would also be in order, I suppose, after this one was considered. And I'd look for the clerk's direction on that.
Your worship, it would be probably best to have a separate motion and keep it cleaner.
Would that mean separate public hearings? She's nodding, he's saying.
I think it can be in the same, it can be in the same public hearing. I don't see why it wouldn't be in the same public hearing.
Certainly overlapping issues. We often have bylaws that have overlapping issues considered on the same night. So I think the question is, does that mean a separate night of public hearing? If there's a separate motion specifically dealing with bed and breakfast, it could be considered on the same night as the motion that's being discussed now with respect to changes to short-term rentals.
Do we have the wording in the system? Can we bring it up on the screen, please? Can I have my chicken scratches back so I can? So in response to those comments from council, then I would accept a friendly amendment, and it sounds like councillor Murray would support as the second on the matter, instead of the last clause saying, "And prepare an amendment to the definition of an STR to extend from 28 days to the provincial maximum", we would say that.
Prepare an amendment as soon as possible.
Immediately or in, by May of 2025. Yeah, that looks like that's, that's acceptable to staff. And prepare an amendment, and immediately prepare or prepare an amendment to the definition of an STR to extend from 28 days to 90 days in May of 2025. As for how to accommodate councillor Pope's piece in that, I, does that change the definite, does that change the use enough or change the motion enough that it requires a second motion? Or are you okay with me saying that "And prepare an amendment to the definition of an STR and bed and breakfast to extend from a maximum of 28 days to the provincial maximum of 90 days"?
I would second that.
If I put that in as the clause, is that problematic for staff? That sounds like clear direction of the intent.
Your worship, staff can definitely work with that. Just want to confirm with the clerk they're comfortable with that amendment this time.
Okay, so councillor Murray, you're amenable to that?
Yeah, I just, can I ask a question?
Yeah, actually, we're sort of putting the new motion back on the floor. So if you want to have another discussion, go ahead, councillor Murray.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of that. I, I think there's some, I think, you know, we need a little bit of information coming forward with the new report in regards to, you know, bed and breakfast. I asked it during the public hearing, what is the difference between a short-term rental and a bed and breakfast? And the answer was, they get served breakfast. You know, I, I mean, if, if that's the only difference, then this should be really a no-brainer. I would also check with the city of North Vancouver and see what they do. And, you know, a little bit of a history lesson, the first time we aligned, that we really spent a lot of time discussing this, was when we implemented the no-smoking bylaw within indoor facilities, pubs and restaurants. And we never wanted to be able to impact one municipality over another and send business to the other one. So we lined up together. And I really think it has to be something that is considered every time these every time these reports are written. You know, when it's something that is impacting the broader community, Airbnb knows no boundaries. And so I think we have to ask ourselves, what is, what are our neighbors doing? So we can align, or at least have a debate to align, rather than, you know, experiencing this. So I'm totally in favor, but I just really would like to clearly understand the differences between bed and breakfast and Airbnb. I think they're just both names of short-term rentals, in my opinion, because many Airbnbs, you know, offer different things. I have a girlfriend that runs an Airbnb over in Victoria, and she provides, you know, a light continental breakfast in the morning for her guests. And she's not, she's not a bed and breakfast, but she just does that because it's an extra addition to, it's, it's how she markets herself. So those are my comments.
Thank you, councillor Murray. And yeah, again, that piece would have to go through a public hearing process, and so we can get additional information about it before we consider the matter as well.
And can we just reconfirm that we couldn't waive the public hearing?
Mr. Milburn, are you familiar with our provision to waive it on this kind of instance?
Can we look into that?
Yeah, we can, we can provide advice back to council. The challenge with the provincial legislation on a waiver is it doesn't necessarily speed up the amount of times it comes before council, because council then needs to consider whether or not to waive before it considers first reading. So there's, there's a different process without a public hearing, but there is still a timeline attached that.
Yeah, I'm not afraid of the timeline.
Counsel when the, when the item comes back.
But what we could waive, what we could waive, councillor Murray, is we're not required to have a delay between the time the public hearing ends in consideration of second and third reading. So maybe we could consider tightening up that from the time of the public hearing to second and third reading.
But let's just look into whether or not we can waive it, because we've had this discussion. It's been going on for two years. Let's just, you know, make this as simple as we can make it.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Councillor Pope.
Yeah, I would agree with that, actually. Let's make it as simple as, as possible and move forward with it. I'm slightly hesitant to suggest this, but I'm, I'm wondering if we could ask staff, if a new report has to come back with new bylaws anyway, and it may have to go through a public hearing, can we ask to provide amalgamation of our bed and breakfast bylaws with Airbnb?
Mr. Milburn?
Your worship, that could be done. We could not bring the report back by May, though. There would be additional consultation we would want to do with the Airbnb operators. There would be additional amendments to the bylaws being bed and breakfast are currently regulated as a home occupation now, where short-term rentals are a separate type of commercial use. It's just, we're dealing with a very old 1965 bylaw in terms of the existing bed and breakfast rules, and they have changed over time. But I would suggest that keeping the resolution simple at this point enables speed. The more we have to do work to change the bylaw, the longer the process would necessarily take. Thank you.
I see provincial maximum of 89 days. Is the provincial maximum 89 days or 90 days?
It is less than 90 consecutive days is the definition.
Okay. Next speaker I have is councillor Ma.
Okay. I'm glad to see council's views have evolved on this. It's been a long time. I do remember that I've always supported going beyond 28 days. What the reason given was because it tied to BnB, so I think the sentiment now is this, we need to get on with this. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Question.
The discussion on the matter is the motion clear up on the screen? See no further speakers. Prepare to call the question. All those in favor? Contrary-minded, councillor Forbes, is that hand in favor?
Yes, it is.
Thank you very much. Okay, council, thank you very much. That actually completes the business of this evening's meeting. We don't have a report section this evening. We'll get to that at our next regular meeting of council. So at this point, I will accept adjournment.
Move adjournment.
I've got it from councillor Hanson, accepted. Thank you very much. Everybody, thank you to staff for preparing the public hearing and everything that went along with documenting it. Thank you to members of the public for participating in the process, and thank you to our councils for your deliberations in this matter. Everybody have a fantastic evening. Good night.